Alright, it is eight o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. If everyone could stand for the pledge.
Nine pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public discussion? Anyone? Derek, did you have something?
So during the closing session of legislature this year, there was an addition to Senate File 659 that we're asking everyone to call the governor and ask for lena and veto. Item twelve on that item. And so what happened is they put in a clause that allows the state to charge back the 9-1 joint service board, whatever fee they want. They don't specify. They don't give any timeframes. They just say that they can charge back 9-1 for whatever fees they want. And so the reason that becomes a problem is the way that 9-1 is funded. Currently, 9-1 is funded by a dollar per phone line per month for anyone that has a phone in the county. That ends up being about $300,000 a year. We budget $300,000 a year for that budget. It barely breaks even. And so when they start pulling funds out of there, we are going to go negative in our fund balance is what's going to happen. And the problem becomes that balance then will be borne by local property taxpayers. And we already have issues with our radio system not providing enough coverage in the county, and so all those funds are used to upgrade our radio system. Right now, one of the things we're running into is that outgoing to schools, we don't have portable coverage in the buildings there. And so we're looking at doing a project for them. Well, if we just put a radio repeater system in the school, we're looking at a $600,000 project. If we actually do a radio tower, we're looking at $1.8 to $2 million to do that. And so some counties are very the brunt of that with property taxes. Some have saved up like we have to put funds forward from the 9-1 fund balance. We're not in a position where we can pay for that. And so when they start taking our fund balance away, we're even going backwards further. Now, there was a working group with the Sheriff's Association of Emergency Management, 9-1, that worked with the legislature, and asked for an increase from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five. That went nowhere, and we're going backwards from that. So eventually, we're going to want to do something with radios for in the school system. And to do that, we have to do radio upgrades. And so if we ever want to do that, it'll have to be borne by property taxpayers. So very poorly written bill. And we're asking that you guys call and talk to the legislature, or talk to the governor, excuse me. I do have an example of a letter that the emergency management, APCO, ENA, ISAC, firefighter association, patrol and lumber employees, that will lead to cities, and the 9-1 boards across the state are sending to the governor. And I will provide that to you guys. But again, unfunded mandate from your legislature. I can't answer that. I don't know.
You don't know what they're going to do with it?
What's that?
You don't know what they're going to do with the money?
Well, I would guess they're running red on their budget. They've taken on a much bigger piece of the pie with some upgrades in software and hardware to the 9-1 centers, and I would guess that they overspent. And they're trying to figure that out. The other thing that they're looking at is that a lot of counties have a large fund balance in the 9-1 balance, and that's because of radio systems. So some of the counties have a $1.00, $1.5 million fund balance, but it's dedicated to tower projects, which are $2 million a piece. And so legislature sees that fund balance, they're like, oh, free money. Let's take that and use that for the state operations. It would be my guess.
What is our fund balance?
About $600,000 is what that is. And again, if you do one project for one school, that money is more than gone. They provide the routing of the calls and the backbone of the radio system. So they provide a certain level of coverage in all the counties. It's okay. It's not great. In town, if you go inside a building, the coverage dies off. And especially in school, there's pretty much no coverage once you get inside of the building. It's an issue. We are going to be testing with the radio that has a Verizon backup built into it. But the cost of a portable radio goes from $2,000 to over $10,000. So when you start talking about, you know, forty radios, it adds up. We're going to try and work before we can, but this is a big issue for local property taxes.
Thanks for the update.
Yep.
Yeah, we'd be following that.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thanks, Derek.
Anyone else for public comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated May 13th, 2025.
I assume that's the agenda for May 20th, and the minutes for May 13th?
The agenda for May 20th and the minutes for May 13th, yeah. Okay, motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Wacker. Any discussion on the agenda or minutes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Discussion decision to review and approve claims, conservation claims. Everyone had a chance to review them. Any questions? Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Garmin, second by Haas. Any discussion on the claims? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. We had our budget status report in the packet. Thank you, Tammy. Any questions, comments on that? Getting down to the end. Okay, well, let the record reflect. We acknowledge that. And then Dan, go ahead. Monthly update from our Veterans Affairs Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent out my report last Friday. I had a couple of things that I added to you for your report this month off cover as well. As of April, we had thirty-three calls, forty-six messages. I did twenty walk-ins and referrals, and had one out of pot or one out of office. Number of forms that we submitted to the VA for that month for claims was sixty. Did get you an active number of twelve fifty-five records that I'm monitoring. Nine hundred and ninety-eight are active current records. And I anticipate that going up because I've added some more since I've done those figures. I've currently got thirty-five claims in the system. One that's ready for decision, fifteen that are under development. I'm working one supplemental claim appeals. I did recently complete the spring training down in Johnston in Des Moines. So we got that taken care of. I am registered for the National Conference in Kentucky in July. Working on getting the mobile medical unit scheduled for June 2nd, which is a Monday over at the election center. So just doing some fine tuning on that. For the month of April, the monthly awards totaled thirteen thousand seven ninety-seven oh eight with retroactive benefits of forty-seven thousand eighty-two dollars. And year-to-date, forty-seven thousand three fifty-nine fifty-five with retro benefits of seventy-six thousand two eighty-eight. Still pending a review with my COOF plan with my commissioners and EMA, so I'll try and get that wrapped up. The commissioners did select a new commissioner to replace Jim Granjanet. Commissioner Jim Harts horn from Sway City will be starting with us here in the June commission meeting. So I'm putting together the packet. I gotta coordinate with Donna on requirements for new hire employees. So I'll work on that, but if there would be one of you available that night that we could just do a quick swear-in at the meeting to make it all official, that'd be great, over at the annex.
When I use that, Dan?
That'll be June 12th. It's a Thursday. And we usually start our meeting at four forty-five, so it should take all of about two or three minutes, I would think.
Is that the VA?
No, the annex.
Oh, at the annex? I'll be there.
Okay. Thank you. Currently awaiting the GDX report of expenditures. Usually that came out in April, and I haven't seen anything from VA yet. So I'm hoping it'll be out any time, and I'll just give you an update on where the county stands with those current expenditures. Just provided some VA health benefits from the website as of the 31st of March this year. So nationwide, there are 6.1 million veterans receiving compensation, and 1.6 million of those veterans are 100% disabled. Nine hundred and one thousand that are using VA education benefits, and 3.9 million that are using the VA home loan. Then specifically for the state of Iowa, according to those metrics, we have 177,922 veterans in the state of Iowa. And currently, forty-eight point eight percent of them are over the age of sixty-five. Veterans that are sixty-five and under is eighty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen. The number of women veterans that we have in Iowa is nine percent for a total of fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy. Probably be bigger after the brigade deploys and then comes back, so. In Iowa, we currently have fourteen hundred and fifteen veterans that are receiving veterans pension. We have forty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight that are receiving compensation. We've got ninety thousand six twenty-four that are currently enrolled in the VA healthcare system. And then DIC benefits to those families, four thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. So thought I would just give you a little bit of the federal side, and then how that applies to Iowa with some of the handouts. And really, subject to your questions, that's all I really have.
Dan, can you spell Jim's last name for me? Thank you.
Originally from Denver, served in the Air Force, served in the Army, came out to Iowa.
Very good.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Discussion decision to approve liquor license for top of Iowa Lucky Wife. We've got a motion by Stecker, second by Garmin. Any discussion, comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. We have a discussion decision to approve law enforcement contracts for FY 25, '26, cities of Burt, Benton, Lakota, Lead Yard, Lone Rock, Laverne, Sway City, Titanka Wesley, and Woodmore. Good morning, Bailey.
Good morning. Okay, we did not change still $2,000 as it has been in the past. And all of the mayors and all the counties have signed already.
Okay. Very good. I'll let you date it, or do you just want me to sign it?
You can go ahead and date today.
I can date today, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. I will get those signed and give them over to you.
I can get them for me later. Do you want this? I put them in that way.
Yeah, that'll work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bailey. Okay, we need a motion to approve the law enforcement contracts. We got a motion by Wacker. Second by Stecker. Any opposed, or sorry, any discussion on the motion?
Has it ever opened its $2,000?
It's been that way for a long time, yeah. It was $1,000, I think, quite a while ago.
A year.
Yeah, for a year.
I talked about the rates of that a little bit recently, but that could be something for next budget if we want to talk about. But this is what's in our current going forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the law enforcement contracts for this year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Yeah.
That was best.
Welcome back.
Will you pass one of these each?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't get it sent right away. We are up to discussion decision for a solutions contract.
All right, so. I apologize. This is the first time you guys are seeing this. So if we need a way that we can certainly do that. As you know, Solutions Software was purchased by Harris Local Government about four years ago. Solutions provides the software that runs the courthouse. So auditor, accessory, treasurer recorder, and is the core of our business operation. Every year, we renew our license code agreements, support agreement with Solutions. This is normally formality. There's not usually any changes. Well, with the issues we've run into with their staff turnover and losing folks that really had the experience, knew what they were doing, we've run into support issues and time requests, turnout on support tickets, and just general knowledge or lack of knowledge. And so we, last fall, decided to bring in an outside vendor to help support that. That was the money we spent last fall. RenewGov is the name of that company. They've been doing a great job. And what we've been doing with them is we'll open a smart ticket with Solutions first, give them a chance to fix it. When we don't hear back from them within a week or a few days, then we call RenewGov. Or if it's an emergency, we call RenewGov directly and have the issue fixed within an hour or two if they're very responsive. Well, Harris doesn't appreciate an outside vendor helping with the issues with their software. And so they've added a section. It's highlighted. It's the third page down. And I'll just read it out loud so we're all on the same page.
Page five of that.
It's section five, yep, 4.6, and it's the one highlighted and red.
Yep, yep.
The customer shall not enlist support from any entity outside of active vendor employees. Contracting support related to the vendor program through any additional third party, former vendor employees, or any persons outside of the vendor's current staff is strictly prohibited. Customers shall not discuss open support tickets with any persons outside of current employees' customer without prior written consent to the vendor. So we have a couple of major issues with that. And the first is that that means that Tammy can't call another auditor and ask about issues they're having with the software. None of our employees can without talking to Solutions first and getting permission to contact another county, which is a huge problem because all of our staff communicate every day with other counties on issues with the software. So that, number one, is a huge problem for us. And then number two is because they were and are unable to support their own product efficiently and in a timely manner, we were forced to use an outside vendor to provide that support. And so the way this reads, I don't think we can sign the contract the way it is today. And we're not the only county that's in the same role. So other counties have been working with their county attorneys to come up with some sort of letter to send to Harris Solutions. You were given a copy of that letter. The biggest sticking point is highlighted yellow on the back. It references 4.6. The other issues on it are pretty minor compared to that section. I believe there's been seven counties that have sent the same letter in the last meeting to Harris. We're hoping to get some traction. If we're all on the same page on this issue, I don't know that it's going to go anywhere. And so we'll probably end up in a lawsuit in Harris, I would guess, over this issue, unfortunately. Because that's not what we want. We don't want to spend our time on this. So I guess today I'm looking for approval to have the chairman sign the letter and send that out. And if we need to make that decision next week, that's totally fine. But the way it says now, we can't sign the contract.
Derek, do you mind if I say something?
Say that again. I can't.
Do you mind if I say something?
Absolutely. No, this is important.
So Basecamp, you guys are all aware of what Basecamp is. Amber knows how important Basecamp is to communicate with other counties. Solutions, Basecamp has a solutions group so that any county that uses Solutions can talk to each other through Basecamp. Instead of calling one county directly, we can all shoot back and forth if we have any problems or issues. It's very resourceful, especially right now with all the problems everybody is having. In one of the emails that Solutions sent out, they are also saying we can no longer use that Solutions group on Basecamp. So that is another, that is another thing that they're saying that they, we can't even communicate through email, so.
I don't think they have that power.
I don't think they do either.
I don't think they have that power. It's called a network.
I, yeah.
How many choose this?
It used to be about half and half. I think it's closer to thirty-eight fifty-eight, somewhere in that range.
Thirty-eight Uzil?
What's that?
Thirty-eight Uzil?
About, yeah.
And what the others do?
Tyler is the name of the other company. We've talked about them in the past. They're significantly more expensive, and we don't feel that they're any better at this point. So coming out of all these issues, ISAC and a select number of counties have put together a process to invite other software vendors into Iowa to write software for Iowa. We've had a good response on that. We believe by the end of July, we'll be able to move forward with a vendor for that process. But that's going to take a couple of years. By the time we go through that, they write the software, we do beta testing, and ISAC will be intimately involved with the support of that product. It's kind of what we're envisioning. And so, yeah, it's unfortunate because they had a great product for so many years, and they did such a good job of counties and holding hands and making sure that everything was updated to save code and helping their customers. And that's, it's not the same company anymore, unfortunately.
I think this is definitely important to talk about. And I think, I mean, even the point Tammy just made is good information. But I think we should be cautious a little bit about what we say right now because if there is potential for litigation, we probably need to have some closed session conversations.
Fair enough.
So that's just my.
So we do need to respond on the contract in some fashion because that is going to be coming up here shortly. So if you have a different suggestion, I'm all for it, but we need to take some sort of action. Yes?
Has Todd looked at this?
I gave him a copy. I don't know that he's had a chance to really sit down and go through it.
I would say we hold off on sending the letter until Todd has a chance to look at it.
Okay.
We can, we can wait a week, wait a week.
Okay.
That's mine.
So, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we need to, we need to do something.
Does this renew it fiscal year, I guess?
Yes.
So we don't have a lot of time.
Correct, right.
Who else has all sent this letter, do you know?
I can get you that list after.
That'd be helpful.
That would be helpful.
Nope.
I mean, obviously, I didn't read it real detail, but it doesn't.
Yeah, section 4.6 is the.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem to have anything real.
Anything alarming.
Substantial until the highlighted section. That's pretty easy to read, and you know, can understand that, I assume.
Right.
Rate increase was about in three, two, eight.
Yeah, I'm less worried about that than actual supporting the product. It's just a, is there a real issue?
Yeah.
Unless you got any other suggestions?
I don't, nope.
Okay. So I'll make an agenda request for next week, and I will talk to Todd.
Yeah. And I would say, in talking with him, probably should have closed session conversations too.
For next week.
Potentially next week, if he can, yeah.
Yep, I will ask him for that. Okay?
Thanks, Derek.
Derek, do you want?
Do you have your texters or? Five. Do you want to call Doug?
We have IDALs, but I don't know.
Well, I have.
Do you have any idea?
I have Doug ahead of IDALs for calling. Maybe, I don't know that he needs to be here.
IDALs is next on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he put that on the agenda.
Oh, he just.
He did?
Doug did.
Oh, he did, okay, alright.
Oh, May, March.
No, March did.
March did, but we can call.
Yes, good morning, Michael. We are up to you next. Get set up, whatever you need.
You guys have copies, I think, about five minutes or so. In your, in your computer or whatever.
She put them in your packet.
Yes, we just finished.
I think they were.
Which one are you going to talk about first?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, forty-eight or one thirty-four.
In general, do you, are you guys familiar with our water quality wetlands? Do you, would it be helpful to give a little bit of background?
Might be good to get a, give a brief overview.
These are the two projects for every Bollamink that's working on.
Bollamink is working on one, and then Ducks Unlimited is working on the other one. I have talked to Tyler Conley about both of these projects. He's looked at the plans and reviewed them.
Yeah, he's, he gave us a broad update, probably a couple weeks.
Yeah, he did, he did.
So just, you know, water quality is important. Something Iowa's trying to address. And what we do with Department of Agriculture is a number of, number of projects to try to address water quality, and one of them are wetlands. And so a lot of research at Iowa State has determined that if you can run higher nitrate water through a wetland, that we can reduce the nitrates by forty to ninety percent, depending on the number of factors. What happens is there's an interface with the water and the soil when it's shallow. And there's microorganisms that will essentially consume the nitrates and convert it to hydrogen gas. So that's the whole purpose of doing this. We've been building wetlands for over twenty years. And in a number of counties, and these are projects that will have to deal with drainage district climate. Now, the, the project is 100% supported and funded by, by IDALs. And so there's no cost to anyone in the district at all. The landowners have, will enter into a permanent easement to, to do, to do these projects so they can't go back and change things later. And so, again, it's, it's 100% funded by IDALs. The design engineers have to meet NCS standards. And part of what we can't do is have any negative impact on country. So that's how, how it's designed. So there's, again, that's two projects. One is, which one do you want to talk about first? Doesn't matter.
We can go with forty-eight first.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight is, I'm not, I'd have to double check, but that's the one in section ten, is it right?
Yep, yep, yep.
So this was designed by Bollamink, and this is what we call a tile zone wetland. So there's existing tile that's running through there, and then there's a pothole. And so the idea is to intercept the tile, run it by this miniature gravity feed into the wetland, allow it to be treated, and then to essentially return the water after it's treated back. allow it to be treated and then to essentially return the water after it's treated back into the tile system. So, the landowner has, has agreed to this. We're gonna be removing the tile, it's under the wetland, so it doesn't drain, but then rerouting tile. It's gonna end up, um, essentially back, back into the tile. So we're not, so we're taking some water temporarily out, treating it, then putting it back. Any questions about this?
Like Kyle mentioned, we, Tyler had gone through this with us as well, so, yeah.
And we, uh, the main thing we needed to weigh down this one was the landowner. And in order for us to enter to the easement, we have to be first in line. We had to work through a number of things with, with, with Mr. Black. We've done that and once we have this approval, then we'll move forward to construction, for construction. The other one is, been designed by, um, Ducks Unlimited. And this one's a little bit different because of elevation, restring. So the plan is to intercept the tile and then run it to a pump system. But they will also put a, a new tile that goes around the wetland. So if anytime the pump is not working, um, the tile is still gonna be draining. And this will actually be a solar, so it won't be running all the time. But it will, Iowa State has done some studies that there'll be enough pumping capacity that will still do an effective job of treating the nitrates. For this, I've seen in the wintertime, they won't be pumping it off, so. And then there is a, a, a structure and embankment that's gonna be built. So the other one with a pothole that we're gonna fill, this one, we're actually creating a wetland by building a berm to hold the water back. There's some surface water that will be draining to this too. So that's, it's gonna issue pile, we're water control structure. And then, uh, there will be a way that it goes back into the tile downstreams. Again, Tyler, should you be this, there's been a little bit of refining of the, of the design that's been incorporated into these plans. If there's any questions specifically about this at all?
Any questions from the board? Doesn't look like it.
Okay. I guess my request is that just get approval, uh, has, from the board has, uh, to, to proceed with these projects as the trustees for the drainage districts.
Thanks for being with us and presenting that. I need a motion regarding the water quality wetland project. Motion by Stecker to approve, second by Garmin. Any discussion on motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, Doug, we are up to you and to approve the Iowa fifteen D tour agreement.
Uh, yes, um, oh, I think it was twenty twenty-three, actually, might have been twenty twenty-two. The board supervisors actually approved, uh, this very same agreement. The plan is for high, on Iowa fifteen, railroad crossing, replacement project. It has not been completed yet. But, uh, the DOT, uh, does have, believes that it's going to be completed in June ninth to June twenty of twenty twenty-five. Uh, there would be a detour where, uh, they would be using part of two hundred tenth street as a detour from Highway fifteen east to the city limits of Woodmore. And then from two hundred tenth street going north, which is also the city limits, going north up to Highway eighteen. Like I say, this is, uh, this, this is something that's been approved before, it just hasn't. The construction has not started, so it's kind of reaffirming that very same thing. And I would recommend that the board would approve of that.
Alright, is there a motion out of bag? Motion by Haas. Second by Stecker. Any discussion on motion? If not, all in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. I need to sign, oh, no, I don't.
Right there by the X, if you'd sign that, please, thank you.
And we can go ahead with the food waste management association comprehensive plan discussion.
Yes, uh, we spoke a little bit about this, I did email it to the board supervisors. It's also the questionnaire is in the electronic folder. Page one is the only page that I think the board needs to visit about. And this is for Cassuth County residents. So each city has received this very same questionnaire and they would, they would answer for their own residents. So this is for Cassuth, residents that live outside of city limits in Cassuth County. So if you could speak for the residents of Cassuth County, question one on a scale of one to four, one being very low, four being very high, indicate the community satisfactions level with the waste services, recycling options. Do you believe those residents have very low, very high? Or what, uh, what you would give that satisfaction ranking?
You want the board to answer all these right now?
Yes, if the board could please give me some guidance.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'd say.
And are we talking about, you know, the bins that we have over here or are we talking about more than that?
Well, people can, right now, the existing recycling options for people that live outside of the city limits are, they can bring their recyclables to the transfer station. Or they can bring their recyclables to the recycling bins that are located, you know, over.
Well, those bins are always full, so I would say.
I think that's the only complaint.
I, I know I was gonna say that's not a complaint, it means they're being utilized. I, I would say I utilize those bins all the time.
So do I.
I, I use, and I'm very thankful that we have them, so.
So, recycling options, satisfaction is. Being at very high, but.
Three.
Three.
Yeah, three.
That is the only location on the, for the kind of the south side. If you're on the north side, you would go to Berg, go to the transfer station. Or if the cities allow people to, cities have some recycling that they use themselves.
Probably want, maybe the only complaint I've ever heard is, is that all the people in town, they use it.
Yep.
And that's, you can't really avoid all that, yeah.
I think that's valid, that Algonah seems to have that.
I don't think people know that that's not for them either all the time. I mean, I, we did it growing up and I, I never knew any difference, it's just, yeah.
I think that part of, theoretically, people that pay for garbage service in towns, I think, or in Algonah, they're supposed to also have curb side recycling. Now, whether everybody has garbage service or not, I can't say that that's for sure.
Well, the important thing is if people are using it, it will recycling, I mean.
Put a three, that'd be.
Yeah.
Household, or excuse me, appliance recycling, appliances, we accept them at the transfer station. That's really the only way for people to just recycle appliances. It gets huge, I know that. We receive a lot of appliances. However, there are every now and then appliances in the road ditch. Speaking as county engineer, that we end up taking there as well. Three, okay.
Mostly is I'm not gonna, I don't know that anybody's ever commented me on any of them.
Household hazardous waste, uh, May through September, Wednesday mornings. Everybody, they can make an appointment. Uh, we also with the health, with the cleanup day, uh, that went, goes very well. People make appointments and they are busy for me till noon on cleanup day. So, again, a three? Knocked out, okay. Electronic waste is available at the transfer station. Bring your electronic waste to the transfer station. When the transfer station is open, Monday through Friday, all the time, so.
Yeah, we use that pretty, uh, wouldn't say frequently, but we've utilized that and, uh. A lot of work. Yeah. Yeah. Getting rid of old computers and stuff like that and.
The courthouse as well.
We breathe the price, the, the price on, you know, getting rid of some of that stuff is very good, so.
Pretty reasonable. Okay, we do not have anything for tires. The county Waste Management Association. However, the tire dealerships, you can't pay. If you go get tires, you can pay the tire, the dealership to get rid of the tires. If people have accumulated tires over the years, I think Carter, we talked a little bit about that. There are ways, I believe, that you can. So it's available, I don't know how, what the convenience is of it. But what would you wanna put on that?
I don't know if it's applicable to the transfer, or to the Waste Management Association, I don't know.
Okay.
Just being, we don't do it. I, I don't know.
So, the satisfaction of our community.
But two.
But two?
But two.
Okay. Yard waste, we really have no, uh, thing on that either, so.
Most towns have that or.
Yeah, but again, the satisfaction level for the community, the rural residents, are they, they probably don't.
I don't think anybody calls yard waste in the country.
As, as.
Burn my own stick.
Person, yeah, person in towns. Okay. And then education of our, our recycling, which I, I, I believe we can do a better job also on that. I don't know what the satisfaction level is.
Like the trend is kinda, it was really good and now it's dropped a little bit. As far as people that are recycling.
Yes.
And I, I don't know, I mean, I'd like to see it continue, but.
Okay.
I, maybe better education, I, would, is never a bad thing. I don't know. I mean, I mean, the information's out there on what you can, can't take. Right. To the. Either you ignore it or you don't. So, I mean. You, you can give them the information all, all you want, but whether they read it or not is really up to them, so.
I'm sorry, sorry, color.
Recycle, we introduce.
Three maybe?
Uh, a three? Okay.
That's fine.
In your opinion, does the community actively encourage recycling?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the most important issue in regards to solid waste in your community?
If people not paying, they're using the road, it's just a.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, I don't know if that's everybody's opinion, but.
Alright, yeah, letting things accumulate and.
A lot of times, um, garbage is kind of, as long as it's picked up, it's, that's what it needs. You know, as long as I can get rid of it, I, I, I'm satisfied. Out of sight, out of mind type thing. I don't know if price, I think people are pretty satisfied with the disposals of goss. So. Alright, uh, any solid waste programs you'd like to see implemented in the next few years that you can think of?
Take my tires? No.
Well, a tire, it is.
There was one a while back, I, I didn't remember that, it was quite a few years ago, the one I remember.
It was a depart, I think Department of Natural Resources did. They had a grant available where some of that was paid for.
People responded, agreed, it was a low cost money.
Right, I mean.
Or if it's a low cost, you know, I mean, if you think of.
It was free that day.
I think that there was, but I think it was all paid for by the Department of Natural Resources. In an effort to try to get all the used tires and then get everybody to start and take care of it. What assistance may your community need to establish these programs?
Stay funding.
Funding. Any other, the rest of the stuff I can just go ahead and fill out?
Okay.
Um, for us?
Any other comments, questions? Alright. Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Doug, yeah. Okay, we can go ahead with the right of way whenever you are ready.
Sure, um, we have two requests for tile crossings on gravel roads. The first one is from Corn Country Properties. Uh, they would like to cross, make two crosses on two hundred third street, hooking up to an existing tile that would be lo, that owned and operated, uh, my understanding, by the Alt family. We have all the proper paperwork for this. Uh, we spoke about it last week, maybe the week before. But this is, we've gotten everything, so it's time for the board to go ahead and approve of this. And again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this. This would be according to our policy that we have for road crossings.
Motion? We have a motion by Wacker to approve. Second by Haas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
And then we have a request from, uh, Hamilton Brothers up near Bancroft. This would be crossing once, um, three hundred fifty street. The water runs north and then east. They would be taking that water from section thirty-four, running, uh, hooking onto a tile that's existing in section twenty-seven there. Uh, they are the owners of everything there. Uh, we have all the paperwork and again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Okay, motion by Stecker? Second by Haas?
Sorry. Stecker.
Stecker and Haas, yep, yep. Any discussion on the permit? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
And then the last one, we have, uh, resurfacing work started. So this would be a resolution to close the roads that are being resurfaced. If someone could provide a resolution. Uh, this is a formality, uh, we will close them when the contractor moves on. We will open them when they are finished, but, uh, we do need to close that officially by the board supervisor.
Okay, this will be resolution number zero five two zero two five oh one. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Garmin. Second by Stecker. Any discussion on the resolution? Uh, if not, roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Taylor.
You're okay.
Did Doug email this to you in text?
I believe so.
Sorry.
So Garmin and.
Garmin and, and Stecker.
Haas?
Haas.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
That is all construction of the road anyway.
Okay. Have three documents for you to sign, Tammy, if you could sign that one too, please? I don't know, it's too Carter. Thank you. Very good, thanks.
Thank you. Discussion whenever you're ready.
Uh, yes, um. Next week, uh, we have scheduled, we've asked for, uh, bids on maintenance seal coat. So, we'll have a letting and an award next Tuesday. I believe it's eight forty is the letting. Uh, if everything, uh, checks out, we'll come up and have the board a, award that. Uh, there are three roads. Um, it would be on P sixteen from Iowa nine north by A twenty-one. Uh, P twenty from A forty-two north to Iowa nine. And P forty-four from B nineteen north to, uh, B fourteen, three miles, uh, in that road section, so. But we'll have that seal coat letting next week. Uh, received a letter from the insurance company on the motor grader that was involved in the accident at the end of March. Uh, they, uh, did, um, they totaled that out. So, it's a total loss. It was insured for three hundred thirty thousand dollars. We do have a five thousand dollar deductible on that. Um, we have a couple of options as far as getting it replaced. I will be working with them, but we will be replacing that motor grader. HMA, the asphalt construction has started, they're doing some patching, work down. It would be, uh, on the Hannah Road, they're doing some patching, and then they're gonna be moving on and patching on the Erbton Road that had some crossings on it, and the Bojovart Road that had some crossings in the bridge. They'll be getting that stuff taken care of. We do have pre-construction conference for the bridge north of Sexton with Godvers and Smith. That is Thursday. We also, yesterday was supposed to be some maintenance patching. They were gonna start on the road south of Tyke. Uh, however, weather is not cooperating with that. Um, but we do have a list of places that need to be patched and we'll be getting that taken care of. Uh, our road department employees started working four ten-hour days yesterday. Uh, slurry leveling, again, they're supposed to be starting on that, weather's not cooperating. But as soon as it does, we will have them going, uh, working on getting some, uh, open positions filled and also getting some equipment, uh, replaced. So, that's everything that, uh, the engineer's office, secondary road department, uh, working a little bit with Cory. We did get a variance application, uh, coming in, so I'm working with Cory to get that taken care of, uh, for reserving.
Very good. Any questions for Doug? Alright, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Doug.
We are up to drainage, anybody ready? Quick break? Okay. Yep, we can take a.
Are you going to just?
Five ten minute break? And come back?
Yes.
Feel generous, ten minutes.
I know it. You guys complaining about fives? I gotta say five?
I know.
You know they're.
Yeah, even if I say five.
My understanding, for six, seven years, I don't think it's supposed to be. Talk to the informant that. This is down, you know, we're very, this fancy mess here.
Yep.
That's where that six foot, five or six foot, uh, is on the road. It's boiled out, whole there, right over the bottom, twenty feet deep. I mean, you put something in there and it disappears. And it's sloughing off, and it's, and I feel that. And my understanding, years ago, it was on the schedule to be figured out. More so there? Casey thought it years ago, when he was on the board.
Have a tough schedule.
Yep, yep. I got, I got a bunch of cement that can be used in there right now, because I took out a bunch of cement, it's molten, it's powder, it's molten. So, I got that available to bank, that bank there that's sloughing away.
Yep.
And put it in bottom of that hole. I don't know, I've tried to throw it out of that hole, but it just, it comes off of that hole. So, it keeps getting deeper, so it's sloughing, sloughing off.
Unexpected big things. That, that's what happens, when you spell your name. If I had to guess, um, it's probably harder than it sounds. There's probably an I in there, but there shouldn't be M E N in it. Yeah. We, uh, we go, some. I'm a mom, I'm a mom's baby, so I'm from, I'm from the cemetery, that's it. We're actually relatives that are, like, have been married to us. If they're in West Bend, I'm sure. What was there, was it a few brothers, my grandpa's father? Um, this one, like, last week, I'm writing about the county road projects. She, um, I live on, uh, East Bay, West of Americana. You probably. Go with the. Not a place that, like, they're, I'm on the south side, outside of the whole, uh, uh. Worth depending. I'm in the, it's quality of structure, I'm in between, I think I'm in between. Yeah, okay, I'm right in between. Yeah, so I'm in between a couple of, you know. We all need to matter to something going. He's been here since early this morning. He's up next. Yeah, I know, that's nice.
Both are trying back there. It's great.
Sit down.
You are still quite a waitress.
Okay.
You were.
Alright.
Morning.
Okay, we are all back and we'll get rolling again here. Nate, you are up next with, uh, discussion decision to approve quotes for BMW Control Specialist for Drainage Maintenance. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, we're gonna be working on the, I got quotes for the east side of the county, kind of by Tyke. And Ledgeard area, uh, all the ditches have been looked over and checked over for brush control, they look pretty good. They're, uh, the regular maintenance is doing its job, so, uh, the quote was at a hundred and nine thousand. Last time it was approved and the word voluntary cost forty-one thousand ninety-four dollars, so. I don't see it being any more than that this time, so.
Sure.
The program seems to work and I'd like to keep doing it, so. If we could get that approved, that would be good.
What's the quote for those time?
Uh, the quote is, um, a hundred and nine, it's the same thing.
Same as?
Yeah, it's just, I went back and looked to see how much it cost and that's what the cost was, so.
Okay.
I just brought those numbers with to compare what the, yep, so.
Sounds good. Any motion? Motion by Stecker?
I'll second.
Second by Wacker to approve the quotes. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, we are up to questions about main four drain. Uh, Don McGregor, you put the Sunday agenda?
Yeah, when I put down my agenda, it indicated to me that it'd be closer to nine thirty. I have a few people maybe showing up and asking if I can just wait till nine thirty.
That, that's probably fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So. Okay, we'll come back to that then. Uh, discussion decision to approve payoff one for DD four lateral forty improvement. Yep, it's in our packet here. Any questions or otherwise we'll take a motion?
No, move to approve.
Okay. We got a motion by Stecker. Any second?
I'll second.
Second by Wacker to approve payoff one for GD forty, lateral forty improvement. Any discussion?
Somebody knows the words been done.
Ted, you want to say?
Ted's here.
I think basically it's just the tile searching and.
It's just.
The board, uh, like Ted, it's, uh, we do plan on getting started possibly for June this week, so, on the end of the week itself, so.
Anything else? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Then we have discussion decision to acknowledge the report for voluntary annexation into DD one thirty-three by Colin Klingbile, Jacobson Westergarden Associates, and set a date and time for public hearing. Was Colin?
He was gonna be.
Coming or?
Available by phone.
Oh, he's gonna be available by phone, okay, alright. Alright, um, Josh, do you wanna call him? Please? Sure. Yep, yep.
This is Colin.
Hey Colin, this is, uh, Josh in the boardroom, um, over here at the suit.
Morning.
Good morning, Colin. Good morning Colin.
Good morning.
We are up to the, uh.
Voluntary.
Voluntary annexation, there you go.
Sure. Is, is, uh, is Steve Sherland or is it Pat Reichsler or anybody else?
Yep.
Yes, they are, yep, yep.
Alright. Well, I, I guess if, if they wanna start and just kinda give you an idea of what, what they're trying to do and then I can kinda go into the voluntary annexation piece of it, maybe we can start that way.
Okay.
So essentially.
Either one of you guys that wanna start, could you come up to the podium just so everybody could, could hear you?
Do you guys have his annexation?
Yep.
So if you turn to the, uh, the picture paper or whatever I'd call it, um, essentially we're trying to drain some lands out of DD seventy-two into the DD one thirty-three main open ditch. I think there's like roughly two hundred and eighty-one acres that we, we'd like to direct that way, uh, due to the undersides and, and just restrictions in DD seventy-two. Pretty straightforward for the most part, the path is kinda laid out there and the drainage boundary and, um, Colin kinda took care of the rest of the, you know, the different, how to spell it out or whatever, so. Kind of in a nutshell, that's what we're trying to do. Um, at the top end of it, we would like to tie those two mains together so it can flow either way, whatever way is easier and just try to relieve some of the drainage issues in that section of ground, there those two sections of ground.
Good.
Okay. Yeah, so when, basically, as Ted was saying, you know, there's part of this voluntary annexation thing is that the reason for it is because if, if they're doing what they're proposing to do there, they would be taking water from one drainage district into another and coming across and over into a different drainage district, you can't just go and do that, I mean, this is a private child project. Um, but basically, you can't just dump, dump water into a different drainage district, especially without getting permission. And so, uh, you can go through this process of voluntary annexation, which is basically, you know, the lands involved are saying, um, you know, we'd like to, we'd like volunteers voluntarily annex into Drainage District one thirty-three. Um, but you, you can imagine, I mean, not so much with an open ditch, but still at times, but just for example, at a time when it would be probably more of an issue is just, let's say they were switching from DD seventy-two to one, DD one thirty-three and it was into a different tile and that tile, the rest of the people in the district might say, well, we don't, we don't want that extra water. You know, our tile's already over, overwhelmed or whatever, so with, with this, with the main open ditch and, um, the, the existing assessment schedule for Drainage District one thirty-three has over fourteen thousand acres. Um, so if we add another, uh, two hundred and eighty approximately acres, that would increase the area by about two percent. Um, but not nearly, obviously, ditches whole lot, you carry a lot more water than, than tile, but it's not as big of an experiment typically going to do a different open ditch. Um, so with that, um, I've got the, the, the report has a table in it and essentially it's the land that is two different types of land. Some, some of the parcels involved in this are not currently on the assessment schedule for DD one thirty-three and so those, it would be a true annexation, like they'd be added to that schedule. And then, um, I've got in the table, basically recommended, um, benefit unit values for, for those parcels until when work would be done in the future on DD one thirty-three, that open ditch. These parcels would help pay, pay for that work because they're using that ditch. Um, there's also some parcels that currently are in, in the, the assessment schedule for DD one thirty-three, but we'd be not the whole parcel, if that makes sense, but not all that, all the entire parcel drained into DD one thirty-three. So we, if we're increasing the number of acres, essentially we're talking about increasing the benefit unit, um, with the increased acres. So I guess how this would work is, um, we need to schedule a public hearing and then, um, send notices essentially out to the people in this table who would be affected by this. Um, and then it, it likes lighting this basically, writing notice to that hearing. And then at that public hearing, uh, we can talk, talk about this again and then I guess with the board would, would be able to vote and, and approve this or make adjustments or, you know, just do whatever you think fits. So that's kinda where we're at today, filing, filing the report, um, and then scheduling, scheduling a meeting, a, a public hearing. Any, any questions at all?
I don't think so, other than do you have a recommendation for a date and time?
Yeah, uh, Marge and I were emailing back and forth a little bit yesterday and we were thinking that, uh, maybe June twenty-fourth could work, um, I do, I will say that I've, I've got a, a hearing in here late at nine o'clock on that same day. So if we could do it, we could set it, you know, maybe ten thirty or something and, and I don't know, I don't think I would have to be there in person and I can probably just, just call.
Colin.
Somewhere today, but just to make sure we don't get, um, mixed up with, with those two, but I know, um, they'd like to get going on this project assuming it's all approved and everything, so the earlier the better and with the notice requirements, that's kinda the earliest we can have, that's.
Are, are you planning to go to that other one in person or, um, phone or something?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a reclassification.
Okay.
Hearing type, I'd better go to that one in person. But the other option would be, um, we could do July third. Yeah, I think that's the Tuesday, the next Tuesday, I think. Uh, I have that open as well, that, that Monday with, um, you know, Ted or Steve Sherland.
I think our timeline, we just wanna try to get.
But that'd be the other option.
So June twenty-four at ten thirty or July one at any time, could do it a little earlier too. We could push back.
Would, would eight o'clock on the twenty-third?
Fourth.
Twenty-fourth be possible? Or will you be traveling and getting ready for that other one?
I, if I'm gonna be on the phone, I, I can do that.
Let's, let's do eight o'clock on, on the twenty-fourth then.
Yeah, I like her.
Cause that shouldn't take real long.
Well, and it might be more manageable for anyone who wants to attend, they can come right away in the morning and be done with it.
Yep. So, June twenty-four at eight AM.
Sounds good.
Alright, thanks Ted.
Anything else you guys wanna say about it right now? So, sounds good, then.
Alright, okay, Jarman makes the motion, second by Stecker. For approving the, or setting the date and time for the public hearing for voluntary annexation at June twenty-fourth at eight o'clock in the morning.
Does it also include acknowledging the report?
Acknowledging the report, yep, yep. Okay, uh, everyone understand the motion, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous, thanks Colin.
Alright, yep, thanks everyone, have a good day.
You bet, yep, you too.
You too.
Bye. Marge, we'll go ahead with repair requests. Thank you.
Ready for me?
Yep, go ahead Amber.
Okay, I request, uh, number thirty, it's in Benton Township southwest, southwest quarter of section five. Broken tile washout, um, it's been repaired by Anderson Tile. Um, and then request number thirty-two, uh, is in the northwest and the northeast quarter of section thirteen. It's a main tile, it's an eighteen inch tile, two spots are broken, uh, in the fence line and, um, it's blacked, so, um, I will get some of that. Did I say pronunciate down there? I don't know if I did.
I've got number thirty-one and DD one fifty-six, this is in section twenty-nine of Irvington Township on the lateral one B there. It's a broken tile from Brian Casey. Okay. Uh, I'll need a motion for the supervisors to handle their requests, some of, Kyle, not as Ted, Stecker, uh, mo- motion by Stecker, second by Whacker. And any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Marge? Okay, we are gonna go.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna run out for a second.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're, wait, don't.
I was gonna say we could just go ahead, but that's, that's fine. We'll take a break for a minute here. I guess I should ask, Marge, did you have anything else for us?
Um. Yes. Um. The twenty twenty-four FEMA, um, projects are completed, they're working on finishing. That I'll, I need you to sign up for.
Okay.
Just for processing.
Yep, I'll stop in after. Okay, we are all back, so we will get, get stuff here. Uh, we'll go ahead and, and Don, yeah, we'll come back to your agenda request here.
Yeah, we.
If you. Okay, yep, we're gonna go ahead and do that now, um. If you or anyone else has questions, please come up to the podium and just state your name and, and your questions and, and we'll address those in an orderly manner there.
If you don't mind, I'll use the seat here, cause I have a back that's bothering me, I'm gonna be seeing a specialist on Thursday to see what we can do about it.
You, you what, what was the first part?
If you don't mind if I sit here, cause I have a back that's kinda bothering me.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, sit there.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Don.
Alright, whoever you've ever met, congratulations on your reformed position.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Amber.
Yeah, thanks.
Tammy, and here we have our petitions I'm presenting to you today in regard to this.
Uh, we're here in regard to the meeting that was held on August sixth and, uh, where we were informed about the status of the drain at that time. What we requesting here is what I'm saying, landlords of Sioux County District four requesting an account of district work done from January one, two thousand nineteen to present. This must include district FEMA for ditch repairs, all work receiving FEMA dollars. Projections of cost landlords were told that this project was at a cost of fifteen percent of the total. Uh, currently, in two thousand twenty-three, we were assessed three hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand twenty-four, we were assessed seven hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, this number here I have next, I have a net needed number for that. And, uh, checked with the trader's office back in February, he indicated that the three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars were on the, uh, ledger. Declected yet. And, uh, on five twelve twenty-five, it was indicating to me from the trader's office, it was four hundred and four thousand dollars in some odd sense, so decluttered. Any questions thus far? Okay. The, uh, final request on here, well, we're, we're requesting Colin, well FEMA dollars that have been used as it pertains to Sioux County drainage projects also. Then the final question is landlords were also requesting the name of the individual that prepared to hand out the information used in the drainage district number four. The information we held on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. On that date, we were told the individual that prepared these documents could not be revealed to us. The reason I'm requesting that is, we were given a document indicating that there was two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and nineteen cents of unselected stamped warrants from the previous years of two thousand eighteen. You remember that? The ones that were there? Okay. In, uh, September of two thousand twenty-five, I requested information from the auditor's office on the status of the drains and levees on drain, drain four. So on nine nine of twenty-four, I received documents from the auditor's office and these, these documents indicate that the, uh, the, uh, stamped warrants that were indicated that were, hadn't been collected, they're all redeemed by, uh, from two thousand twenty. to two thousand twenty two, this came from the auditor's office. So my question here is, why on August sixth were we given a document indicating that these were, hadn't been redeemed? And a month later, I contacted the auditor's office and I need a document showing that they're all redeemed. It's our feeling we were given false and misleading information that day. Any comments on that? So what we're asking here, respectfully, is if you could bring us into a meeting on August sixth and give us misleading information, we would like to have a hearing giving us accurate information on this task of this drainage. In, uh, December of two thousand twenty three, I requested from the treasurer's office the, uh, where the drain was, its balance. So in two thousand twenty three, the balance of the drain was nine hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars. So there was our three hundred thousand dollars that was collected from us, that ball was put into this, it was paid, needing a balance of nine hundred sixty-four thousand fifty-five dollars. Following the year, we're given a bill for seven hundred thousand dollars with, and now there's still money on the books. And the four hundred four thousand may be a little deceiving. There's, uh, it was indicated in an email to us that there was, uh, currently, there may be a hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred seventy dollars that are under further payment in that they asked the time to pay their bill. So that would leave a balance of about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars yet to collect. With that assessed of us, we've essentially paid a hundred percent of this drainage project. So we would like to respectfully ask for a hearing to give us accurate information where this drainage stands and where this money went. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Don. And you're requesting a a meeting
Yes.
at a at a later date to to address these.
Carter, you can call us and give us false information. Could you please call us and give us accurate information?
We can certainly have a another meeting.
And Carter, do you remember on August sixth, I asked you outside the courthouse if you understood what it meant to be a trustee?
If I what?
If you understood what it meant to be a trustee. You could call that.
I could have, yeah.
You did.
Okay.
I asked you for the name of the individual that prepared the documents and you laughed at me in front of my brother and said, what good would that do? This is your opportunity to prove that you are a trustworthy trustee, okay?
I did not know the name of that individual.
Well, you can find out for us, please. And Tammy, it's your obligation as auditor to give the citizens and landlords of Cusouk County accurate information at the hearing.
I didn't produce any information at that hearing.
Well, you should know who prepared it. It was done in your office.
No, it wasn't.
Just, I'll leave it at that. Any other questions for us? And these are landlords here that want this information.
Yep, I I wrote wrote things down here and.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Amber, yep.
Um, I have heard a lot of things from landowners and this is an issue. When landowner, landowners entrust us with their money and when they entrust us with their money to pay these repairs as trustees of these drainage districts, they should know where that money goes. Right now, I'm hearing that they are not feeling that their money was handled properly. If it was, we should be able to give them a definitive answer
Right now.
saying that it was. How we accomplish that, I think we really need to talk about because it hasn't been accomplished and it's been questioned for quite a long time. We should easily be able to produce this information and that should, and yes, it's gonna have to come from the auditor's office, the treasurer's office. They're the ones handling these situations. As a board, we need to find out how that needs to happen so that these landowners can be satisfied with an answer, whatever that answer may be. It has to be answered. We can't keep kicking the can down the road because that's all we've done. That I can see.
One final thing, Howard and Amber, I recommend that you go to the May twenty eighth meeting of two thousand twenty four. You can advance it to about one thirty-three on the, uh, bottom and review what was said that day when the seven hundred thousand dollars was added to the assessment schedule.
May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four?
And about one thirty-three on your, if you are not wanting to watch the whole meeting, you can advance to that point.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Don. Okay, we we have closed session next. A discussion decision to go into closed session for potential litigation per Iowa Code twenty-one point five one C. And so we would need a a motion. We'll call call the attorney and see if he's ready.
But you said that we. How are we going to address this though going forward? What are, we have that discussion?
Certainly.
How are we going to address this? I know we can't make any decisions today, but how are we going to address it? I think you probably want to hear from us how we're going to address it.
Well, we can certainly have a meeting to answer those questions. I mean, that that's kind of what I was hearing, I guess. And make sure we have, as a board, prepare some clear answers.
We'll probably need to plan some work sessions. So I'd say probably plan some full afternoon.
I'll visit with Tammy on when we can get a meeting or at least a workshop for the board to discuss how we're gonna present information and.
A lot of this information, I don't think, why would some of it have to be full work session? Because why not should just be information that we gathered from, you know, the treasurer's office and where it was put towards it.
Well, I'm I'm just saying to start the conversation as a board, we're gonna need to have a conversation. You know.
I need some definite questions so we can address each question.
Well, that's, I mean, the requests are on here, on the petition.
Oh, okay, well, we haven't seen the petition.
Oh, you haven't seen, okay, okay.
We have not seen the petition.
Yeah, yeah, um, all the requests are the same as that document, say on the second page here.
Second page here.
Is the same thing?
Yep, as what's on the petition, right?
Yep, yep. The petition just has the signatures on it.
Okay.
Did you find the attorney number?
Yeah, we got it, so. I just know she was wanting to talk more about us.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna set up a meeting here in the in the future and I'll visit with Tammy on when we can get that coordinated and and, uh, we'll present answers then. Sure, and we'll address the issues presented in the in the petition here. Okay, so thank you all for coming in.
Okay, perfect.
We'll see you again. Our attorney's ready to go into, our attorney's ready. You call me. Okay, uh, everyone, we're gonna, our attorney is ready. We're gonna be going into closed session, so if everyone could exit the room, please take your conversations elsewhere. Thank you.
Bob, are you there? Can you hear us yet? Okay, um, we're in open session and we're ready to go into closed, I believe.
Yep.
If you're ready and advising that.
Howard, I'll get it in a minute. Oh, I have to post the signs, so.
Okay. We have a motion by Stecker to go into closed session. Second, second by Wacter. Any discussion on motion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Hoss?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
We are in closed session and we'll give Tammy a minute to switch things over.